I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands my nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Councilmember Bachman.
Here.
Mayor Beaton.
Here.
Councilmember Lundberg.
Here.
Mayor Protem Sullivan.
Here.
Councilmember Grabowski.
Here.
Councilmember Martin Poniac.
Here.
City manager.
Here.
City attorney.
Here.
DPW director.
Here.
Finance director.
Here.
Police chief.
Here.
Fire chief.
Here.
City engineer.
Here.
Roll call complete.
Thank you very much. Public hearings, we have none. Citizen comments on agenda-related items. This is an opportunity for citizens to comment on agenda-related items only. Citizens in attendance shall be recognized by the mayor for comments limited to five minutes. Letters submitted to council will not be publicly read. Is there anybody that would like to step forward? Please state your name and address.
Good evening, I'm Laura Heinselman. I'm here on behalf of the Manistee County Community Foundation. Our address is 400 River Street, Suite 50. Thank you for the opportunity to provide public comment this evening. I'm speaking in support of the agenda item, consideration of authorizing the three-year agreement with Housing North. The lack of availability of safe, quality housing that our residents can afford continues to be one of our community's most pressing needs. It is negatively impacting area residents and families, as well as those looking to move here, our businesses, our schools, and the community as a whole. Housing North is a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization based in Traverse City that works to advocate for and develop housing solutions across a 10-county region in northwest lower Michigan. They have the expertise and experience needed to help us build our community's capacity to advocate for housing, implement housing programs, and develop new housing solutions. The Manistee County Housing Ready position at Housing North is based on other successful models that have joined philanthropy, local units of government, and other organizations to collaboratively fund similar positions in both Emmett and Chalaboy Counties. The Manistee County Housing Ready Coordinator will be placed locally and serve as a primary point of contact for local housing needs and opportunities, work alongside the newly-established Manistee Housing Action Team to assist with the development of a range of housing solutions, including those that are identified in the city's Housing Action Plan. The Manistee County Community Foundation has joined Manistee County in making a multi-year funding commitment towards the position, as have other local organizations. The City of Manistee executing the contract with Housing North would be a big step forward in making the collaboratively-funded position a reality so that our community can move forward with addressing our housing crisis. I respectfully encourage your full support. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anybody else that would like to come forward? Moving on. Consent Agenda. All agenda items marked with an asterisk are on the consent agenda and considered by the city manager to be routine matters. Prior to the approval of the consent agenda, any member of council may have an item from the consent agenda removed and taken up during the regular portion of the meeting. Consent Agenda items include: Approval of Minutes, Cash Balances, Revenue and Expenses, Consideration of Ordinance 22-02 to Add Chapter 470, Electric Mobility Devices and Shared Mobility Devices to the City of Manistee Codified Ordinances, Consideration of Authorizing the Mayor and Clerk to Sign Closing Documents to Sell City-Owned Property Renaissance Lot 12, Notification Regarding Next Study Session, Consideration of Manistee JC Beach Bash Jam to be Held on Friday, July 1, 2022, Consideration of the Lions Club Fish Boil to be Held on Friday, July 1, 2022. At this time, council could take action to approve the consent agenda as presented. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Thank you. Heather, you can take the roll call when you're ready.
Councilmember Bachman.
Yes.
Mayor Beaton.
Yes.
Councilmember Lundberg.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Sullivan.
Yes.
Councilmember Grabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Martin Poniac.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. New Business: Introduction of a New Employee, Officer Brandon Spalding.
Good evening, members of council. Our process to hire 13th Officer began this past winter. As some of you know, hiring a police officer is a very rigorous process. We're very fortunate to find a qualified candidate who passed our rigorous background, which includes physical, psychological, and a very, very thorough background investigation. That candidate was Brandon Spalding. Brandon Spalding was then brought on as a part-time paid cadet, and as of two weeks ago, he was promoted to a full-time police officer as in Week 2 of his field training program, which will be a 16-week training program. And if he successfully completes that, he'll be independent on the road on his own, so to speak. So I'll let Mr. Spalding introduce himself.
Good evening, ladies. Good evening, gentlemen. Good evening, board members. Introducing myself, my name is Brandon Spalding. To give you kind of a little bit of background, like Chief said, I did start two weeks ago. Graduated from NMC Police Academy. Background into my life, I grew up in Meesick, graduated in 2016. From there, at 17, I enlisted in the Marine Corps. I was an infantry squad leader. I did a few deployments overseas. Got out in 2020 of June. From there, I kind of looked forward, kind of thought about what I wanted to do. My thought was, kind of get back in the workforce, so I worked some odd-end jobs in factories. Then I started going to college, thinking about what I wanted to do, and then I wanted to, thought in my head, I wanted to get back in the uniform. So I started college, August of 2020, at NMC. And from there, completed the academy a few months ago, and then I was looking for job hires, and I had sent a resume to City of Manistee, had a interview, and then was offered a job position. Proud to be here, honored, and excited that I was given the opportunity to work for Manistee. I look forward to upholding the community's standards and looking forward to having an upbeat attitude, and really just helping the community make as much difference as possible.
The uniform suits you. Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Officer Spalding, we are so happy that you're with us, and we're happy that the force is, you know, looking out and hiring people that are in the area that want a career in law enforcement. It really pleases me to see you up there.
Thank you.
Thank you, and welcome. I think we're all pretty happy about it.
Well, Chief, I'm glad we're at our limit where we asked for a long time ago. So I'm glad we got Mr. Spalding on, so we can get the full contingent here. Appreciate it. Thanks, Governor.
Thank you.
Welcome aboard.
You're here.
Thank you.
The Chief left you. No pictures?
All right. Consideration of granting an access easement to Morton Salt. In 2019, Salt acquired 3.82 acres of land from the city at an acre compost facility, former city landfill site. Morton intends to mine salt from this location. Morton has evaluated access options and has requested an easement from the city to access the 3.82-acre parcel from Red Apple Road. The location of the easement will not interfere with city operations. The city attorney has prepared the grant of easement document. At this time, council could take action to approve the grant of easement to Morton Salt and authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute the agreement.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Do you want to further explain this, Mr. Gammel?
Sure. Thank you, Mayor. Yes, we met with Morton Salt to discuss the use of monitoring wells, and it came up that on this property, there was an easement that was needed, and it was, so it's kind of some housekeeping that it appeared this easement wasn't granted back when the property was sold. So we're happy to bring it forward to council and give them the easement so they can start using their property.
Is the property in front still for sale?
That's a good question. I don't know, Jeff, do you?
When the city sold the three acres to Morton, we kept the furniture on Red Apple so that it was saleable, but I don't think we've ever marketed it for sale. I might be wrong, but...
Are we planning on keeping it, or are we going to try to sell it?
I think that's up to city council, what you do with that land. But we did keep, I think it's 300 feet off of the, off of Red Apple, to where you see that square on your screen that says with the well in the center, so that those are commercial lots that are available for sale. I'm just not sure that we've ever marketed them for sale.
What are our wells out? Are we using some of Morton's wells?
So the, the way that Morton explained that to the city manager and I, they've got active well fields to the south of this and have progressed for many decades mining salt. They acquired the mineral rights below our 40 acres and then acquired a three-acre strip that goes pretty much east to west in order to drill a well that is shown there, so that they can then connect it to their existing wells or their mining system. And then on the west side of the property is all their flow lines that return back to the plant. So I believe they said that this could produce in the 10 to 15 years of supply to that plant. So I think they'll continue to use the stuff that they have to the south and then add this into their portfolio.
Does that plume, does it go in a certain way, Jeff?
The PFAS? Yeah, the PFAS is actually much shallower than the salt. The salt formation is thousands of feet down. I'm not a geologist, but this is what I recall. And so that, that upper contamination is moving to the northwest. But they have, there has been some chloride plumes that have been monitored for decades out of that same piece of property, and so some of those monitoring wells were what we sought after to just be able to retest and not have to drill additional ones, and we were successful in getting permission from Dow to do that.
In answer your question, council member, we'll, we'll look at the different properties for sale around there and report back to council.
Well, I ask because I don't know how that's going to affect, if we do an easement, if it's going to try to, try to sell those properties.
And I think my, my understanding with talking with Morton, they only wanted to buy a certain area, and they, I don't think they wanted to buy the whole amount either. So, but you're right, we can take a look at that.
So, specific to that question, if you look at where the X is on the corner, we did keep, try to keep that piece of property as a saleable lot on its own. And so when they were laying out that easement, they looked at the topography, but they also kept in consideration where we might lay out lots in the future.
Because I'm trying to think back, because those were for sale when they bought that property, weren't they?
Well, the property, the private property to the east of the city property was...
Thank you, Jeff. Heather, you can take the roll call.
Councilmember Martin Poniac.
Yes.
Councilmember Grabowski.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Sullivan.
Yes.
Councilmember Lundberg.
Yes.
Mayor Beaton.
Yes.
Councilmember Bachman.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Consideration of approving the purchase and installation of bullet-resistant glass for the police department and clerk slash treasurer office, and amending the fiscal year 2022 budget for the down payment. City council approved fiscal year 2023 budget in early May, which included $27,000 for bullet-resistant glass in the police department and clerk slash treasurer's office. Two proposals were received. Total Security Solutions was the lowest proposal for $26,106. At this time, council could take action to approve the purchase and installation of bullet-resistant glass for the police department and clerk slash treasurer office in the amount of $26,106, and amend the fiscal year 2022 budget by $13,100 for the down payment. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Thank you. Discussion? Any questions?
Read the news. Now we don't want any bulletproof glass, right? It's, it's running timely, running on time.
I guess so.
Hopefully I never need it, but...
All right. If there's no other comments, I guess we're ready to take the vote.
Councilmember Bachman.
Yes.
Mayor Beaton.
Yes.
Councilmember Lundberg.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Sullivan.
Yes.
Councilmember Grabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Martin Poniac.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Consideration of awarding a contract for right-of-way tree planting. The city annually works with city residents to plant new trees in the right-aways. Part of this process includes hiring a contractor to supply plant for the trees, and plant the trees. The project was publicly advertised and bid, and bid with one bid received. The cost for trees ranges from $334.67 to $415.50, depending on the species selected by the resident. At this time, council could take action to accept the proposal from Anthony's Outdoor Services LLC for right-of-way tree planting. Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
For it.
Just to give you a little bit of background, as it reads, we did bid this out publicly. We received one bid. Last week, I just let the owner of Anthony's Outdoor know that we were having, that we were putting this on the council agenda, and updated him on how many trees had been ordered through the city. He voluntarily said, man with that big a number, I'll go back to the nursery and I'll revise my numbers if I can get better numbers. So the numbers that you just read were the updated numbers, they're not on the agenda, so the public understands that. But right now, we've got 42 trees that have been ordered. Normally, we're in the 10 to 15 at best, and the average of those 42 trees, the new savings would be about $63 per tree. So that'll save the community about $2,500, and the contractor did that voluntarily, knowing that he was a single bidder.
I'm curious, what species of tree was the most popular that people chose?
I don't have it, the new proposal in front of you, but there is a count on that per tree.
It looked like 21 for the Autumn Blaze Red Maple.
There it is.
And, and the reason why the number of, of tree plantings went up so high this year is because the Tree Commission made it their goal to advertise and get this program, get the public more aware of this program, so they deserve all the credit for that. Was the public paid per tree? Excuse me? Was the citizen paid per tree? I think it's $50 right now, and that comes with a watering bag. So the Tree Commission's mission was, we're cutting down more on an annual basis than what the, what we're planning, and they wanted to try to reverse that trend.
Thank you. Okay, Heather, I think we're ready to take the roll call.
Councilmember Lundberg.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Sullivan.
Yes.
Councilmember Grabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Martin Poniac.
Yes.
Councilmember Bachman.
Here.
Mayor Beaton.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Consideration of awarding a contract for the reconstruction of Memorial Drive. Memorial Drive reconstruction has been planned for several years in the city's transportation improvement plan. The project has been designed and publicly bid, with two bids being received. Davis Construction Inc., $487,803.50, Sadorzky Brothers Excavating, $519,406, and the engineer's estimate was $540,000. The city attorney has reviewed and approved the agreement. At this time, council could take action to approve a contract with Davis Construction Inc. in the amount of $487,483.50, and authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute the agreement. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Thank you. Any questions?
Council's go for work, please. Well, as everybody's aware, that, that stretch of road is in real bad shape. So the, the project is full reconstruction from the intersection of Fifth Avenue and Washington Street all the way to US 31. It'll have new curb and gutter, new sidewalk, new asphalt road base, a little bit of storm sewer work, but it'll be a full reconstruction. Will the throat, going on the 3 going to be the same, that same approach? Does that change at all? It does not change. The geometry of that was actually designed by M.D.O.T. when they widened that corner there, and so we're going to come, our starting point is right where they left off, so that geometry will stay the same. There, there is some changes into the driveway approaches into the property, Olson's property, but I don't, I don't remember how significant that was. Or can you speak to that? The reduction in the opening? Yeah. It's fairly significant, we're going to be down to about a third of the size of the original opening, but I don't know the exact number. Have walked on both sides? Uh, just on the riverside, on the south side. And then there's a section of sidewalk on the north side, but that's more in front of...
Dial-A-Ride.
The Dial-A-Ride, right. But there's, there's really no place to put that because it goes right into the, the parking areas there. We did include some additional on-street parking real close to the intersection of, of Washington Street, and we did it because there's so much demand there when the farmer's market is there, but obviously the farmer's market's moved. But as opposed to really tightening that up because it's over wide there, we, we added some parking spaces to make use of the space. Thank you.
And when will it start and when will it end?
When their, it just baited kickoff. We have to get, probably a month from, two weeks to a month for those to proceed, and then it's in November. Yeah, so, so basically, we're going to, once we, if council awards this contract tonight, we'll notify the contractor, once they get their bonds, insurance, and all the paperwork back to us, we'll schedule a pre-con and get them on it.
Okay, great.
So, and then it'll be completed by this fall.
The public will appreciate it. Thank you. Heather, I think we're ready. Roll call.
Councilmember Lundberg.
Yes.
Councilmember Bachman.
Yes.
Councilmember Martin Poniac.
Yes.
Councilmember Grabowski.
Yes.
Mayor Beaton.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Sullivan.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Consideration of approving a resolution designating the city's state and local fiscal recovery funds as revenue replacement for the US Treasury guidance in the final rule governing the grant. The city received a state and local fiscal recovery act grant of approximately $639...
Thousand.
I'm sorry, $639,944. The US Treasury final rule allows up to $10 million in grant funds per community to be designated for revenue replacement and used to provide any normal government, governmental services, including supplementing previously budgeted operational expenses. Designating the grant funds as revenue replacement provides the city with the maximum flexibility for the use of these funds. At this time, council could take action to approve a resolution designating the city's state and local fiscal recovery funds as revenue replacement for the US Treasury guidance in the final rule governing the grant. Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Thank you. Discussion? I think we're ready for roll call.
Councilmember Bachman.
Yes.
Mayor Beaton.
Yes.
Councilmember Lundberg.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Sullivan.
Yes.
Councilmember Grabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Martin Poniac.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Consideration of authorizing a three-year contract agreement with Housing North to fund a Manistee County Housing Ready Program Coordinator position. Housing North is coordinating the funding of a position that will help implement the Manistee Housing Action Plan that was created in 2019. The position is funded through the city and other contributing entities. The position will add capacity to work with the county land bank, implement programs, and attract housing development to Manistee County. The adopted city of Manistee fiscal year 2023 budget allocated $20,000 of ARPA funds to Housing North for this position. The city attorney has reviewed and approved the contract. At this time, council could take action to approve a three-year agreement with Housing North to fund the Manistee County Housing Ready Program Coordinator position and authorize the mayor and clerk to execute the agreement. Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
I'd like to invite Yarrow Brown up to talk about this program a little bit.
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for having me. It's a beautiful building to spend my evening. I do have a presentation I can give, or I can just answer some questions about, about the position, so I'll defer to you and your time on your agenda, but I can talk a little bit about what Housing North does that would provide some, some context. No, that's fine. So we are a regional organization. We cover the 10 counties in northwest Michigan, and we have three legs of our stool, as we like to say, awareness and communications, advocacy, and capacity and resources. Okay, thank you. So I just wanted to talk a bit about why we're here, and I think you all know that we're in a crisis situation when it comes to housing, and just wanted to point out that we work from 0% of the area median income now, almost up to 150% of the area median income, where we're finding people in our year-round workforce not able to find housing along that income spectrum. And when we talk about affordability at Housing North, what we're really saying is that we hope that nobody is paying more than 30% of their income to live. So affordability is, is relative, but we know that people all across this income scale have a need, and Housing North is really focused on the, the 80 to above AMI, but we do work with partners across the income spectrum. In 2019, pre-pandemic, we did commission a study to figure out what the need was in the region, and the slide shows how that need was projected across for the past four years. So from 2022 to 2024, projected, we needed over 15,000 units in our 10-county region. You can see on the chart, the bulk of the need is in Grand Traverse County, but Manistee is one of those communities that does have a need for housing, both rental and homeownership units. All of this information is on our website, but wanted to just provide it to you today to just put it into context and see what the need is. Now, these are numbers, sorry, that should not say Leland County, it should say Manistee County, but I'm going to dial into the actual city of Manistee. So there's a need in the full county, but in the city of Manistee, the projection was for about 302 rental units and 94 homeownership units. Now, we know those numbers have changed since the pandemic, but these are estimations. The majority of the need for rental units is for those making $40,000 a year or less. So a lot of the work we do is around communications and advocacy, so we're working to create housing-ready communities, advocate for zoning changes, and helping to remove any barriers for housing in our region. I am not here to say you need to build a lot of apartment buildings or completely change the look or feel of your community, but we do need more density to be able to meet the need, and there's creative ways we can do that. Since 2020, we've come around and tried to encourage communities to become more housing-ready. We did present Bleach to the County in Manistee a few years ago, and are working with a local task force called the Housing Action Team to help develop a strategy, which is why I'm here today for a Housing Ready Program Coordinator. We've had over 12 units of government support this so far, including Manistee County and the city of Manistee, to commit to becoming more housing-ready. These are just a few programs that we do offer right now, and I'll just highlight one being the Housing Ready Program, which is why I'm here. And then in October, we host an annual housing summit. Every year, this year, it will be October 27th and 28th. We also provide advocacy trainings and monthly webinars. So one of our policy initiatives that I just wanted to point out is that we have four bills right now in front of the House, the House. It was presented to the Government and Finance Committee, and we're hoping will be on the House floor. These four bills, in partnership with the Housing Michigan Coalition, of which we're part of, will bring opportunities for local units of government to make decisions around housing that you wouldn't have had in a normal situation. So projects that don't require state or federal subsidy, these bills would allow you to make decisions to provide support for housing in your community, including pilots or payments in lieu of taxes, or expanding neighborhood enterprise zones. If you haven't been to the website, I encourage you to at least go on and see how you could support these... support these bills, because they're going to be huge for our community in northwest Michigan. This is a link. You can Google Housing Michigan Coalition and find out. And right now, there are four bills that we are hoping will be passed by the House. They were passed by the Senate last year. So another thing we do is work under other legislation. Besides that, we're also really advocating for the new Office of Rural Development to make sure that position is funded, to help promote housing and community development in rural communities. The picture on the left is, or sorry, the right, are just some examples of ways that zoning ordinances or ways we can address housing issues in our community, including increasing density, looking at parking, so housing people over cars, and different incentives for workforce housing. Capacity is the reason that I'm here today, to talk about the technical resources and support we can provide through our Housing Ready Program. We have launched this program in Emmett and Charlevoix Counties. We're in our third year in Charlevois County and just hired Andrea Jacobs in January to work in Emmett County. Similar to Manistee, these are shared capacity models where we work with philanthropy as well as units of government to make this position available in the communities. These are just examples of why we need Housing Action Team. So you can see I have different examples of these groups in each of my communities, and most recently, Manistee County, thanks to the support of the Community Foundation, the city, the county, and many members of your community, we now have a Housing Action Team in Manistee County that is helping to drive the local housing goals and decision-making of your community in partnership with Housing North. This brochure, I believe you had a copy of, this just kind of talks about our program, highlighting the communities. So we're doing this work in Manistee County, as well as Leland County, and we have interest in Benzie and Antrim County and Grand Traverse as well. So just an overview of the program. We really do feel it will take everyone to help our communities become housing-ready. We've been working in Manistee for about two years now, and are really excited to get to this point. We do really feel like securing funding for three years is the most effective and will have the most impact. We really want this work to be guided by the local community. What do housing-ready staff do? Well, a day in the life of a housing-ready staff person is very dynamic. They are placed in that community. They're not necessarily building the houses themselves, but the idea is they will bring more housing opportunities to your region and help remove those barriers. They can also help with local funding tools, develop programs, and help coordinate housing resources in your community. These are just some examples of projects and development in our other communities. One of the highlights right now is in Charlevois County. We are working on a new single-family unit project in partnership with the Community Land Trust, the Land Bank, and the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority, and hope this project can be brought to other communities. We're also bringing deed restriction programs and accessory dwelling unit programs to the communities, if there's an interest in helping communities identify those housing opportunities and attract developers for those opportunities. So this is just an example from Charlevois County, where we're launching an accessory dwelling program. These are also known as granny flats or carriage houses, but we really do feel this is one small way that we can increase the density without subdividing or further impacting our parcels. Just one idea. And then I just wanted to show who our staff is right now. We have an Emmett County Housing Ready Program Director, Charlevois County, and are hoping with your support, and I should say that just tonight, a filer township also supported this program, and we're hoping that Manistee Township and the Convention and Visitor Bureau will as well. And I will just say, thanks to Laura, the Community Foundation, we really would have not been able to launch this program or get started in your community without their support. So I want to thank you for your time, see if you have any questions I can answer, and just want you to know we're a resource.
Who is your main contact in the city of Manistee for housing?
This guy over here.
Okay. Just want to know what the chain of command is.
So Bill has been a part of our meetings, and since the transition from the former city manager, we've been working directly with him.
Okay.
I was just... Building these houses for $40,000, when houses in my neighborhood are sold for $250,000 to $300,000.
So we're not, actually, but we are hoping to bring in resources and tools and subsidy, essentially, to make these housing available to all of the workforce. Right now, it is impossible to build an apartment or a house for less than $250,000 without some support. So that can include many things. It can include tax abatements, it can include free land. There's a lot of, basically, we need creative solutions to be able to bring these opportunities to our year-round workforce. So even people making a very significant income are still not available to find housing in that price point.
I was just curious about your data on the housing need. Could you tell me how you came up with that, those numbers?
Yes, it was not me. A company called Land Use USA, they do, they promote this idea of, it's called a target-market analysis. And before I was hired at Housing North, we partnered with Networks Northwest to commission that study in 2019. We have since learned a lot about that study and what we would do now, post-COVID, and we are looking at what we would call a housing needs assessment to update those numbers. The target-market analysis does look at those who live currently in our community and would want to move within that space, as well as projects people who would come and live here if they had a place to live. We know those numbers are outdated, but we do estimate that the need is far greater than those numbers represent. And it is a specific study, I should say, that helps to promote development and attract development, but also give ideas of the need. It did not really look at the types of housing people would want to live in, it mostly looked at what currently exists in our community.
Thank you very much. That was very informative.
Yes, thank you, and thank you for your time tonight.
Heather, we're ready for roll call.
Councilmember Bachman?
Yes.
Mayor Beaton?
Yes.
Councilmember Lundberg?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Sullivan?
Yes.
Councilmember Grabowski?
Yes.
Councilmember Martin Poniac?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. The city clerk has taken action to advertise vacancies on the Board of Review, Brownfield Redevelopment Authority, Compensation Commission, Downtown Development Authority, Harbor Commission, Historic District Commission, Neighborhood Restoration and Beautification Commission, Pay Commission, and the Tree Commission. Mayoral and manager appointments require a motion, second, and council-voted support. Nominations for council appointments do not require a second. After all nominations are made, council votes on the nominees until one nominee receives majority support. The following applications have been received. For Brownfield Redevelopment Authority, three vacancies, terms ending 6/30/25, mayoral appointment. This time, we have one person who has applied. She is an incumbent, it's Shelley Monberto at 3/47, second.
I'll make a motion to support the mayor's appointment of Shelley Monberto. No second.
Thank you.
Councilmember Bachman?
Yes.
Mayor Beaton?
Yes.
Councilmember Lundberg?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Sullivan?
Yes.
Councilmember Grabowski?
Yes.
Councilmember Martin Poniac?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Downtown Development Authority, two vacancies, one term ending 6/30/26 at large member, one term ending 6/30/26 interest member, manager appointment.
Mayor, I'd recommend a reappointment of the two incumbent members, Kelly Greavy and Annie Jacobson.
Kelly Greavy for 606 Broad Avenue, the up-large member, so... We need to take a vote.
I'll need a motion in a second to support that first.
In a second, on Kelly Greavy.
Show move. Second.
Thank you.
You got to speak faster. I saw your mic.
We're ready, Heather.
Councilmember Bachman?
Yes.
Mayor Beaton?
Yes.
Councilmember Lundberg?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Sullivan?
Yes.
Councilmember Grabowski?
Yes.
Councilmember Martin Poniac?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Annie Jacobson, 376 Sixth Street, for the interest member. I need a motion in a second. I guess I made them.
Wait, who made the motion?
I did.
I thought you did, okay.
Oh, Aaron, did you make the motion? I didn't hear you.
Okay.
I heard Grabowski.
I thought it was Martin Poniac. And second was Councilmember Grabowski, correct? Okay.
All right.
Ready for roll call?
We are.
Okay. Councilmember Martin Poniac?
Yes.
Councilmember Grabowski?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Sullivan?
Yes.
Councilmember Lundberg?
Yes.
Mayor Beaton?
Yes.
Councilmember Bachman?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Parks Commission, one vacancy, term ending 6/30/25. Applicants may be non-residents, but must own real estate or a business slash profession, having a licensed business location in the city, or have a child attending school within the city, mayoral appointment. I'd like to... Did I miss something?
No.
Okay. I'd like to appoint Tim O'Connor, 3/30, Fourth Avenue.
I'll make the motion, give me a second. Always got to make the motion, right?
Yep. Did you want to make a motion?
I'll make the motion. Your second, and before we even got a chance to make it, so... Quick, Tim.
I think nice weather is getting to us. Board of Appeals?
Wait, wait, I got him.
Oh, take the roll call. Poor Tim.
Okay. Councilmember Bachman?
He said yes.
Okay. Mayor Beaton?
Yes.
Councilmember Lundberg?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Sullivan?
Yes.
Councilmember Grabowski?
Yes.
Councilmember Martin Poniac?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Zoning Board of Appeals, one vacancy, term ending 5/30/25, 5/31/25. Applicants shall be a representative of the population distribution and of the various interests, and of various interests present in the city, mayoral appointment. Dwayne Jones at 512 Fourth Street.
On motion.
Hey, we have a motion in a second. I think we're ready.
Councilmember Bachman?
Yes.
Mayor Beaton?
Yes.
Councilmember Lundberg?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Sullivan?
Yes.
Councilmember Grabowski?
Yes.
Councilmember Martin Poniac?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Notice, discommunications, and announcements. A report from the Community Foundation and Launch Manistee. A regular part of each council meeting is a report from a cooperating agency, organization, or department. At this point, at this time, Ms. Laura Einzelman will report on the activities of the Community Foundation and respond to any questions the council may have regarding their activities. At this time, Ms. Hannah Rodriguez will report on the activities of Launch Manistee and respond to any questions the council may have regarding their activities. No action is required on this item.
Good evening again, Mayor Beaton, Mayor Protem Sullivan, council members. Thank you so much for the opportunity to be here this evening and to be able to provide you with an update on the activities of the Manistee County Community Foundation. I'm joined tonight by Hannah Rodriguez, our program officer, and I'll turn things over to her shortly. I believe you have a copy of my presentation in front of you and a hard copy as well. Although this photograph of the foundation's founders is about 35 years old, you may still recognize some of the people pictured. This dedicated group of community leaders envisioned a bright future for Manistee County and established the Manistee County Community Foundation as a vehicle to help make that happen. They believed that by establishing a local vehicle for philanthropy, they could help our community build a nest egg for our future, and they did. The foundation's purposes were clear from the beginning, and they remain so today. Build a lasting source of community capital. Award grants that respond to local needs and opportunities. Convene and lead to affect positive community change. The Manistee County Community Foundation is one of more than 65 community foundations in Michigan, and of more than 1,000 across the country. And while we share the same core purposes, no two community foundations are alike, because by design, we reflect the local needs and opportunities of the communities that we serve. Our mission is to ensure quality of life and place in Manistee County today and for future generations by engaging, facilitating, and maximizing the impact of community philanthropy. And if you're not aware, the word philanthropy comes from the Greek words meaning philos, love, and anthropos, meaning man or humanity, so literally, the love of humanity. Other words, people giving of their time, talent, or treasure for community good. The Community Foundation is unique in a couple of respects. First, we're the only entity serving Manistee County that focuses on improving all aspects of life. And through the generosity of our donors, our grants, our scholarships, and our community leadership work, we've had the privilege to impact a broad array of community needs across Manistee County. Additionally, we're a permanent institution, and the majority of the funds that we administer are endowments, meaning that they're managed in such a way to provide a lasting source of support for the purposes that they were established, literally for generations to come. The foundation is a public charity governed by a volunteer board of directors that provide diverse perspectives, leadership, and accountability for the foundation and its funds. We are fortunate at the foundation and our community to benefit from this dedicated group of experienced community leaders with a passion for our purpose. One of the foundation's current strategic goals is working to make our programs and services more accessible to all Manistee County residents, working to eliminate barriers and building equity and inclusion in our work and in our community. The foundation is powered by a professional team of five who are deeply committed to our community and its success. Whether you're curious about how to donate, interested in applying for a scholarship or a grant, or just wanting to share some insight you have about our community, we're here to listen, to advise, and to help. This past fall, we were so excited to relocate our offices and join community partners within the new West Shore Community College Manistee Downtown Education Center. While the past few years have challenged our community like no other time before, we are deeply grateful that through the generosity of our donors, we've been able to continue to grow our impact. As of the end of 2021, we managed more than 100 charitable funds totaling over $38.5 million, and are able to support a wide array of needs across the county. Our 2021 investment return was 14.58%. For the first time last year, our total grant and scholarships awards exceeded $1 million in a single year. In late last year, we awarded our single-largest grant ever, thanks to the remarkable generosity of Forrest Arminger Jr. A grant of nearly $350,000 was awarded to Networks Northwest to provide matching funds to help leverage more than $1 million from the Economic Development Administration if funded. And this support will help us to begin to develop a multi-use trail system to connect communities across Manistee County and to connect Manistee County to the region. I want to highlight several of the funds here that are administered by the foundation that directly impact city or city property. So pictured here are the Ramsdale Preservation Fund, which provides support for the maintenance, restoration, and preservation of the interior of the historic theater and complex; the Manistee Non-Motorized Trail Park Fund, which supports snow plowing and other four-season maintenance needs at the park; the Blossom Boulevard Fund, which helps to make our community even more beautiful and welcoming; and the Manistee Veterans Memorial Park Fund, which supports the addition of monuments and other enhancements to the Park and Memorial Drive in honor of our area veterans. So in closing my portion of the presentation, I want to express our appreciation to the city of Manistee for both your support and your collaboration with us over the years, for your interest in the grant programs that we have. Without entities like the city of Manistee moving projects forward to help our community, we wouldn't be able to meet our donors' intent or our purpose or mission as an organization. So we rely on you for, in order for us to be able to do that. And we hope that you will continue to join with the foundation so that we can work together to realize our community's greatest potential and tackle some of our most pressing needs. I thank you for your support this evening for the housing position. So thanks again for the opportunity to speak with you tonight. I'd be happy to answer any questions before I turn things over to Hannah.
I have one quick question.
Yeah.
Do you assist people who want to start a 501(c)(3) for some charitable purpose in the county?
Be happy to provide resources and connect on that in some certain... In some certain circumstances, we've served as a fiscal sponsor while they're in the process of doing that. So yes, happy to talk with anybody pursuing that.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Anybody else?
You two did work to make a big impact, and we appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We have a wonderful team in board, as I shared, and none of this would be possible without our donors, so thank you, I appreciate that.
Thank you very much.
All right, have a good evening. With that, I would like to turn things over to Hannah Rodriguez, Program Officer at the Manistee County Community Foundation, who does an outstanding job of leading our youth and education-related efforts, including the Launch Manistee Network.
Thank you, Laura, and good evening. Thanks for your time. The foundation continues to be strongly dedicated to youth and education in our community, and we administer several programs and initiatives in this area, including our Youth Advisory Council, or YAC, our scholarship programs, and the Launch Manistee Network, a community leadership initiative coordinated by the foundation. Oh, I'm going the wrong way. There we go. The foundation's Youth Advisory Council, or YAC, is made up of high school students from all six Manistee County school districts, who, through YAC, have the opportunity to learn about philanthropy, recommend grants to receive funds from the foundation's youth endowment. In two thousand twenty-two, the YAC recommended grant awards to Staircase Youth Services, the Wexler Nisaki Manistee Great Start Collaborative, and Onakama Consolidated Schools to support projects that were aimed at addressing the YAC's highest identified priority, youth mental health and access to care. The MCCF Board approved these grant awards, and the YAC awarded the grants at their May eighteenth meeting. In the spring of two thousand twenty-one, the Manistee County Community Foundation, YAC, recommended a two thousand dollar grant to the Historic Vogue Theater of Manistee to support their Twenty-Five Cent Family Matinee Program. The YAC was excited to support a project that would bring families together for a fun and positive experience. In addition to supporting the series, the YAC began working with Vogue staff to explore ways in which they could bring awareness to the importance of youth mental health and self-care to the families attending the films. The MCCF Board of Directors approved the grant, and the YAC began one of their most exciting and collaborative projects to date. We were so excited for the YAC to have an opportunity to really expand their philanthropic learning and leadership beyond grant-making and into raising awareness about such a critical issue. The Vogue's media production manager, Corey Fisher, led the YAC through the process of filming a public service announcement, which maybe some of you have seen, to be shown before movies. The pandemic brought a few challenges to the YAC, as you can imagine, one of which including needing, included needing to meet in a virtual format. So filming a video allowed the group to collaborate even while apart, and with support led to a cohesive project that really gave students a voice and an audience for their message. The YAC's PSA was shown at the Vogue Theater one hundred and nineteen times to fourteen hundred youth and families over the two thousand twenty-two spring break and an additional two thousand people during the month of April. The PSA will continue to be shown before this summer's Twenty-Five Cent Family Matinees, which just began again this last Saturday. And YAC members also worked with the Vogue's volunteer and services manager, Kelsey Rhodes, to learn about volunteer opportunities. Over the course of the spring two thousand twenty-two semester, YAC members accumulated fifteen volunteer hours at the Vogue. So they're very excited about this opportunity, and you can see them here. They got to see themselves on the big screen and enjoy some refreshments at the Vogue for their last meeting. With support from donors with a passion for education, the foundation administers a number of scholarship funds in support of Manistee County students. Scholarship funds vary in their eligibility and selection criteria, and various selection committees recommend recipients who are approved by the Foundation Board of Directors. In two thousand twenty-one, the Community Foundation awarded thirty-four scholarships totaling more than one hundred thousand dollars in support of Manistee County students for the two thousand twenty-one, twenty-two academic year, and renewed twenty-two scholarships awarded previously. The foundation also committed an additional eighty-five thousand dollars in awards for eligible Class of Two Thousand Twenty-One students in the Manistee Commitment Scholarship Program. And this is a unique scholarship program of the Manistee County Community Foundation that is operated in collaboration with West Shore Community College. The overarching goal of this program is really to build equity in post-secondary education for Manistee County students. Manistee Commitment Scholars are nominated by their school district and are recommended for selection by the Foundation Board Scholarship Committee. To be considered for the program, students must meet three criteria at the time of nomination, have demonstrated financial need, be a first-generation college-going student, and show academic promise and a desire to pursue post-secondary education. Participating students and families commit to the program by signing an agreement that outlines expectations for all parties involved. And scholars are coached and supported throughout their entire time in the program by West Shore Community College's Success Coach, MCSP. If scholars meet all of their requirements specified by the program, they're considered eligible for a tuition scholarship award to West Shore Community College. The Class of Two Thousand Twenty-One was the second cohort in this program to graduate high school and begin their college career. We are excited for the third cohort cohort of scholars, the Class of Two Thousand Twenty-Two, to join them soon. And we are also incredibly excited that two Manistee Commitment Scholars graduated from college in the spring of two thousand twenty-two with their associate's degrees from West Shore Community College. We will be welcoming a fifth cohort of scholars, the Class of Two Thousand Twenty-Four, into the program later this summer, so we are excited about the early successes that we're seeing through this effort. Within my role as program officer, I coordinate the Launch Manistee Network, which operates as a community leadership initiative of the foundation. The Launch Manistee Network is our community's cradle-to-career educational network that promotes lifelong learning and empowers residents to advance themselves and Manistee County through education. The purpose of this network is to ensure Manistee County residents are ready to learn and ready to earn, and ideally, Manistee County is known for providing learners of all ages with a quality education, preparing them academically, socially, and financially for lifelong success. Its diverse and robust economy is really fueled by a skilled and driven local workforce. The network is committed to the value that education is for everyone. We really seek to build equitable and inclusive systems that remove barriers to education and increase access and opportunity for more people. The Launch Manistee Network leadership team, with the input of additional network partners, worked throughout two thousand twenty-one to develop a strategic plan that would outline network goals, prioritize strategies, and identify indicators of success. The three goals included in this plan have not changed greatly since the network's beginnings, but our rationale and prioritize strategies have shifted to be more aligned with current needs and conditions. Our first goal is really driven by the idea that Manistee County needs a strong, sustainable early childhood system, and that early childhood care and education is essential to individual learning and overall economic growth and success. Early childhood care and education, as I am sure you are aware, all over the country is truly facing crisis and has experienced more challenges within the context of the pandemic. This has been elevated as one of the highest priorities within the network, and in late two thousand twenty-one, we were presented with an opportunity to embark on a process that would aid in addressing these challenges. The network had been convening cross-sector stakeholders invested in addressing early childhood care and education throughout the summer and fall of this past year. And throughout these convenings, it was determined that Manistee County needed a thorough analysis of childcare supply and demand, strategic action to retain, scale up, and develop capacity within childcare as appropriate and sustainable, and work collaboratively toward community-driven solutions and a strong, coordinated early childhood system. So in late October of two thousand twenty twenty-one, this sort of happened at a great time, we learned of an opportunity through First Children's Finance, a national nonprofit organization that provides loans and business development assistance to childcare providers to participate in their rural childcare innovation program. This program has been executed with several communities in Minnesota, and First Children's Finance released a request for proposals in Michigan to select rural communities who would receive a technical assistance grant, so not a financial grant but technical assistance support, for the purposes of strengthening existing early care and education businesses, expanding the availability of quality childcare, and increasing public awareness of early care and education's role in economic development. The foundation submitted a proposal on behalf of the Launch Manistee Network and other key stakeholders, and thanks to our existing collaborative efforts and clear prioritization of this issue, Manistee County was one of six communities in Michigan to receive this support. A core team of stakeholders was established, and this process began in early February. We're currently in the planning phase of the process and will soon be embarking on several efforts to increase diverse community voice and engagement, which will culminate in a town hall meeting that will help drive our Community Solutions Action Plan. So still fairly early in this process, but very hopeful in what it will leverage and provide to us as a community. The second goal within the network is driven by data demonstrating that Manistee County residents consistently pursue and attain higher education credentials at rates lower than the state average and lower than what is needed locally to grow and sustain a thriving economy. By ensuring K-12 students have the opportunity to explore viable career options and create strategic and realistic plans for pursuing these options, students enter life after high school more ready to learn and ready to earn. Further, in order for students to be ready to learn, it is essential that their social-emotional needs be met and that they have adequate access to care, and we've seen this play an even greater role in the midst of the pandemic. Academic learning and growth are truly inextricably linked with students' social-emotional health, which must be addressed first and foremost. So to that end, the network is prioritizing strategies that maximize career development tools and cross-sector collaboration for K-12 students, as well as supporting efforts to assess existing behavioral health and social-emotional learning resources within our schools, so that these essential resources can support more students. The third goal is driven by data demonstrating that striving toward a skilled and competitive workforce will increase economic viability for individuals and their families, and will create a more robust and sustainable local economy. The network adopted this goal so that Manistee County would be aligned with the State of Michigan's sixty-by-thirty goal and could contribute to overall economic growth within our state. The network is committed to strategies that increase collaboration and connection across organizational partners and efforts to support Manistee County adults specifically, ages twenty-five to sixty-four, in that workforce age range, pursuing post-secondary education opportunities. And I just wanted to close in saying that I came across a quote recently that has had some staying power, which I think really clearly describes the importance of the Launch Manistee Network and community collaboration in general. Author and entrepreneur James Clear writes, "Goals are good for setting a direction, but systems are best for making progress." As we continue our mission at the Community Foundation to ensure quality of life and place in Manistee County today and for future generations, we look forward to continued community engagement and collaboration that builds and strengthens the systems in which we all thrive. So I thank you and for your time, and I am happy to answer any questions you might have.
That number of sixty percent for twenty thirty on degrees, what's the current percentage?
We are at about thirty-eight percent in Manistee County at this current time. And again, this is a goal that we're striving toward to ensure that we have a diverse economy and to ensure that we can contribute to our state's overall.
Well, I think adding a credential rather than just a college degree is an important part of that puzzle.
Yes, and that is a tricky part of the puzzle in that credentials are not currently tracked in the data the same way that degrees are. We do add an additional four percent, that's sort of a best practice of this work, to try and account for those certificates or other credentials that might not otherwise be included. Thank you very much.
That was a very good presentation. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Concerns and comments. This is a time in our meeting where citizen comment is allowed. This is an opportunity for citizens to comment on municipal services, activities, or areas of city involvement. Citizens in attendance shall be recognized by the mayor for comments, limited to five minutes. Letters submitted to council will not be publicly read. Is there anyone who'd like to come forward? None? We'll move on to officials and staff. Mr. Gamble.
Mayor, thank you. I think you asked about an update for Quincy Street. That project's delayed until at least August due to some PBC sanitary pipes on back order, but we'll provide updates when, you know, if it's delayed further, but August is looking like the earliest at this point. Thank you.
Mr. Ford Saylor.
Nothing, Your Honor, thank you.
Heather Peckley.
Nothing, Your Honor, thank you.
Jeff McCula.
Nothing, Your Honor.
Sean Millington.
Nothing, Your Honor, thank you.
Mr. Bradford.
Nothing, Your Honor.
Fire chief Cameron.
Your Honor, thank you.
Police chief Joshua.
Just quickly, I'd like to thank Councilmember Grabowski and Councilman Bachman for volunteering your time for the public safety part of the event, which, if you haven't seen the pictures in the courthouse, is a wonderful thing, so thank you for volunteering your time.
Cool. All right. Mr. Bachman.
I just have two points, and both for the city manager. Thank you for addressing the issue with the church. I wanted to initiate his attention, and he dealt with it, and I've got good feedback that the communication lines are open and making some progress. And also, thanks for getting that debris down at the boat launch star. I see it's starting to get moved out of there, so it's uncluttering looks much better. I've been around town a lot this week, and it looks better. I mean, it looks cleaner, it looks better, so light is happening, it's working, and your leadership, I assume, has got a lot to do with that, so thank you for that.
Thank you, sir.
Nothing?
Okay.
I don't... Pontiac. Mr. Grabowski. You got a list, don't you?
Yep.
Okay.
Man, here. That tent under Cypress Street, I think they could have washed it or something with it.
The fireworks tent?
Yeah. Looked pretty lousy. Also, Jeff, are they gonna start with that disc golf? I see you're putting wood chips already out there. Is that for the golf?
Yeah, we started, we've got six of the tee pads poured, and we've got six more framed up in our, sequentially going through the construction of that. The delay is the baskets. They're, just like everything else, they're on back order. The pilings that Councilman Bachman referenced, we had those salvaged from the Marina project, and our intent is to reuse those as obstacles for the course, and we've got a former professional disc golfer that's helping us do that layout, so... But we did have some complaints, and the city manager said, "Get that stuff out of there if it's gonna take a long time." So we are moving that, but the course is under construction.
Hey, I see in the Parks Commission meeting, they have an article that I yelled about a couple years ago, the Sands Park Tennis Court removal. I thought that, you know, I know that when the school went in with us down at the beach, and then we talked about what they were gonna put in their own tennis court. We get stuck with the court down there, now we're gonna tear out the Eighth Street one, and people use that. And so I, you know, I just don't like that.
Yeah, so it's interesting you bring that up, because we've got the one at First Street that we've rehabbed with the thanks of the Community Foundation grant, and that's in good shape, and it's getting more use than I recall. The one on Robinson Street and Eighth Street is, the cracks are so large that it's actually very dangerous, I believe, to play on it, but there's a, there's, there's different opinions on whether or not it should be removed or what should happen to that. And so we're kind of, my department's kind of caught in the middle waiting for what to do. Personally, I think that the only thing that's salvageable in there is the fence. The surface is just beyond reuse for tennis. The Parks Commission also had a large conversation last summer and voted to recommend removal of the tennis courts down at Fifth Avenue Beach. I think there's been some additional conversations since that point about maybe reusing the concrete as a different, for a different use, putting a tent up or a vent tent or something like that. But, but there's, there's varying opinions on those items.
Well, and the Parks and Recreation Facility, when that came out, the Sands Park was put in there with the video games, tennis courts, playground, and we were putting in for all that, for the state, that they were gonna, they wanted to know how many parks and all that we had. So we're gonna tear it out now, we've notified the state we're gonna keep that or what?
A decision has been made, so I'm not sure how to answer that.
How much did that cost to rehab that thing?
Boy, do you remember what the number was? It was, I, I think- It was, I think, three years ago, it was like $180,000, and we actually made an application to the Community Foundation to rehab the two tennis courts there. The Foundation also had the pickleball court requests. They formed kind of in a committee, and you can help me out with that, Laura, but they formed a committee and looked at all the different opportunities and decided that that facility wasn't worth reinvesting in for tennis or for pickleball, and recommended we reapplied with First Street, which we did.
Okay. Now, is the school going to eventually build a room like they said before?
Well, I don't know what, so, and Aaron's on the board with me, but the city and the school are co, I don't know what you would call that.
Co-owners.
Co-owners of Sands Park, and so any improvements or changes to that have to be approved by a four-person, or recommended by a four-person board. We haven't had a meeting in a long time, and I haven't heard any updates on whether the school has any imminent plans on building tennis courts.
What I remember is the school was using the First Street tennis courts, so they didn't want to put any more money into the courts.
Well, I just see that it's on this, you know, what we agreed with, I mean, we had to come up with a Parks list for the state, and that came up on it. So I was just interested in that.
I think Jermaine's actually on it now. That change was made in November. She's on this, I think that's the committee you're talking.
Oh, is it? Okay.
I've never been to a meeting.
Yeah, we haven't had a meeting in probably here and a half.
Back for a meeting. Also, coming down Main Street Hill, I remember years ago when I was on patrol coming down that hill, we'd always had a sign on there for deaf child, there was a deaf child in that area.
I didn't know where one, are you?
I think there was one way up on the top.
There was one coming down.
Was there?
You know about the autistic deaf child?
Yeah. I thought that was up on the top that we put in a few years ago.
We had a, we had a child that lived up there that was deaf and autistic that would run away in the middle of the night, but that kid now is an adult, Mark. Correct? We talked about that child just the other day, you and I, that child's an adult, so any kid that was deaf when you were patrolling has got to be like retired. The age, young age, every year, little bit.
Well, if there's nobody there.
Wow. I don't see why it's hurt.
Is the question, is the sign gone, or is it, is it there and should be removed?
It should be removed. I'm just asking if it should be removed if it's been.
Okay.
That we don't need it.
Yeah, we can look into that.
Also, I got to, I was going to talk to Mick if I saw him up at the Mack Park, where the fences, are we going to take those fences off that baseball park because they're all broken down? I think we talked about this.
We, we had the fence repaired.
Well, then, yeah, the one where the tree fell off.
And the, and the gates that you had.
You put the gates on, there was one sitting by the fence there the other day.
Oh, okay.
It was sitting by the tree. Then you told me about the field, the baseball field on the other one. Oh, another thing is, I got stopped yesterday, and the guy said, "Where do we take those bags? Because they're getting wet and they're rotting out, and they're falling through, and the guys come to get them. Is there any place they can take those things? I mean, you know, you guys don't do it all week long collecting the bags.
The lawn bags?
Yeah.
Yeah, we do the pickups on Tuesday is our scheduled day. Depending on how the weather is, sometimes we have to go into Wednesday to finish that. We had the recycling center on the industrial park, we had a bin that you could put them in, but we don't have any space like that right now.
Okay. How about the trees? When the limbs are on the side of the road, people have counted how many times the trucks have gone by, sometimes six times. They said, "Why don't they just stop?" As far as making a list, if the guys want to make a list, that's fine, but I don't see them riding up and around the block six times to go pick up some other limbs that are laying right there. I mean, you know, that doesn't make it for economically any sense.
Well, the, and we're looking for some other options and way to make that program more efficient, but the program is for, for brush pickup is to, for a resident to call in, and then they get put on a list, and then we're able to gauge how much work there is and how much resources to commit by the size of that list. If it's a couple pages long, we know we can send the crew out Friday and they'll get done. If it's five, six pages, then Brandon will usually get that crew out a little bit early on Thursday if he can, and then understand, and then he's aware that they probably won't finish Friday and will have to finish up on Monday. So the calling in is really to prevent those trucks from driving around in circles and wasting all that time.
But there is a lot of the people, you know, they don't call in where the limbs are sitting.
I understand.
Oh, and then the trucks ride by, they told the people right out, "We're not picking them up because we're on our list," and I think that's.
Yeah, yeah, I understand that, and the, we had this conversation probably three years ago, and expect with, after council brought it up and we talked about it with the City Manager, and the conclusion of that conversation, of that discussion was, when people don't see it picked up, they usually call to find out why. We can educate them on that call, and then they know to call in the future. If we, if the crews go by and pick them up, then there's no education, then they just continue to put them out. But we're, we're looking at some new opportunities and some technology that can make that a little bit user-friendly for everybody.
Because, I walk my dog, and I thought I gave it complaints.
Yeah, I can argue both sides of it, so I get your point.
Okay, thanks.
You could theoretically, if you picked up brush that wasn't on the list, have a card that they could leave with the homeowner and say, "We did it one time, in the future, please call this number to pick up your brush." That way you could educate them right then. It's easier than sending a letter later, but if they, you know, we used to do cards in the, in the department, and you leave them for certain purposes, so if you did that, not on the list, rather than driving by, you pick it up and then knock on the door and leave a card door that says, "Hey, we picked up your brush today, but it wasn't on the list, but in the future, please call this number, put it on the list, and we'll get it there." It'd be pretty quick and efficient, because what's happened now, it's just, it's not working for the citizens, and it's one of the, one of the anger points that we all hear about is that truck driving by those piles, that we hear, we all hear about it.
I bet.
All the time.
Yep. In fact, that's a very good suggestion. The last time this discussion came about, we put the big giant letters on the side of that truck, but I like your suggestion.
I have called for four or five people when I see the brush, just calling myself, because it's easier to send an email, but I think that's an idea you could think about.
Okay.
Thanks a lot. Chief Glass, you know you weren't going to escape me. What do we do with that place on Davis Street? That is getting to be a filthy mess.
Yeah, it's been cited, it's going to court.
Okay.
The sublet's been cited.
But they got, it got worse. I went one day there, it wasn't too bad, but then they got worse.
I'm sure weeds are going. My anticipation is that we're going to have to get a court order to finish that, or clean that lot out. That's what I fully anticipate, so.
People moved out, and they left all the furniture on the.
Well, okay, we're talking about a different house then. Are you talking about the lot or the house?
Right there, the whole barn, house plus the.
Yeah, the officer assigned to that house is pursuing the new ownership, so.
Good, because it's a mess.
That is a land contract, and we treat land contracts like rental units, so, you know, Davis Street keeps that officer pretty busy.
Oh, yeah.
So they've made pretty good strides, but it's going to continue to keep them busy. I anticipate a court order for that house, and I have to get a court order for the lot. There's two houses that have made renovations, so that monopolizes a lot of that officer's time, for sure.
Okay, thanks. I want to talk to you again.
I'm just going to stay up here. Anything else?
I want to come see if you're up at Sinsville.
If you want to come see me, we can run through the GIS system, and we can go house per house, and I can give you the exact details and dates of what's going on there. Rather than me, I can't memorize all of it, unfortunately, so that's probably a good path.
Okay, I'll come down and see you.
Mr. Gabowski, are you finished? I do have a couple things, but I don't have a list. I just want to remind everybody that Saturday is the big day of serving, which is a huge event for our community. Volunteers sign up, roll up their sleeves or tie up their t-shirts and go to work clearing brush and painting. I think I'm going to be involved in a painting project, just so that you know, Jeff. So it's a great opportunity. If you, if you're driving around town and you see people wearing t-shirts to promote the event, stop by and say hello and thank them, because they're doing this all on their own, and this is a result of the efforts of the leadership program that the Chamber had started a few years back. We have one of them sitting in our room right now, is a graduate of this year's leadership program, and that is Lucas Richardson, and, oh, and we've got, yeah. Sorry. Well, you know, the podium's right there, so we're just, the community is really proud of your efforts. I'm, like I said, I'm going to be painting, but isn't there a baseball game on Saturday as well?
Yeah, I'm going to be messing that.
Okay. Well, the other fun thing to do if you're driving around town is to stop by Reese Park, because it's their opener at the park, and I want to tell you, it's going to be exciting because Mr. Gamble's throwing out the first pitch.
Oh, hot pressure.
That is something to go see. So we'll, we'll get to see how he throws.
To practice.
Yeah. So anyway, that's all I have, so I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.